So I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting of the Village of Skokie Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is created by statutes of state of Illinois and by the ordinances of the Village of Skokie for the purpose of granting proper case relief from the strict terms of our zoning ordinances. The decision of this board to either grant or deny relief will be based upon the evidence presented to it and how that evidence is related to the standards for granting relief. All persons who have an interest in a case, either as a petitioner or as a member of the public, either supporting or opposing the petition, or as an independent witness, will be given a chance to speak on the record and to express his or her points of view. The Zoning Board of Appeals is not a court of law and therefore, we do not follow the strict rules of evidence. However, this hearing will be conducted in such a manner as to hear only competent evidence or statements. Questions as to procedure, interpretation, and of the admissibility of statements or evidence will be ruled upon by Corporation Counsel Tyler Kobelski and his legal decisions will be binding upon this board. Certain cases require covenant rolling with the land. This will be prepared and recorded by the Village of Skokie Legal Department and this is done at the petitioner's expense. Whether or not a covenant is required is a determination to be made by the Corporation Counsel at the conclusion of each individual case. If a covenant rolling with the land is required, it cannot or will not be prepared until our court reporter has returned to the Zoning Board of Appeals a transcript of these proceedings. The Village of Skokie will notify each petitioner when the covenant has been prepared and is ready for signature. No building permits or certificates of occupancy can be issued until the covenant is signed by the petitioner. Should a petition for variation be denied, or should a covenant not be required, the Board of Trustees will authorize a refund of any required fees. Should it be necessary for the petitioner to request a continuation due to lack of preparation, a case continuation fee of one-half of the original application fee is due prior to the rehearing date. This request must be made before any testimony begins. All petitioners must receive a vote of the majority of the zoning board present in order to decide any matter under consideration. Our full complement is nine members and tonight's complement is nine members, making five votes necessary to make a determination on a petition. Tonight, we have two cases, 2019-11Z, 8629 Drake Avenue, and 2019-10Z, 3411 through 3419 Dumpster Street, which is a continuation from, which is a continuation of a case from our previous meeting. So I'll ask Corporation Counsel in these two instances, has proper notice been served and authorized?
Yes, in both of these cases, notice is proper.
All right, very good, thank you. Let's see. You know, in my packet, I don't think I received any minutes from the previous meeting. No?
I didn't see any either.
I can check, I don't believe I wasn't provided them from Marlene before they-
Oh, before she took-
Before she took- I can, those I can, at the next meeting, we can approve.
Okay, okay. It's my unders, well, again, the 10Z, which is the second case that we're hearing tonight, is a continuation from the previous meeting at the petitioner's request?
Correct.
Okay. And the other case from that night was passed, the petitioner's request was passed, approved?
Correct.
Okay. That's it. And it's all on the record, anyway. It's been recorded?
Just to clarify, the continuation for the one on Dempster was a motion made by the board?
Oh, okay, all right, very good. Thank you, Commissioner Perlin, seeing that you were in charge of the meeting last time.
Barely.
All right, thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and we'll move on to our first case, which is 2019-11Z, 8629 Drake Avenue. The petitioners would like to step up to the podium. I believe that Commissioner Jacobson is presenting your case tonight. Is Commissioner Jacobson ready to present the case?
Yes.
All right. Elaine, the floor is yours.
First of all, there's a letter to whom it may concern, to the Village of Skokie, allowing Andrew Venamore to serve as the representative in the application and hearing process for the public identified address. And the case number is 2019-11Z, 8629 Drake Avenue. Wilson and Serena Scallander, on behalf of Andrew Venamore, requests a variation in order to construct a 300-square-foot detached, I'm sorry, detached garage resulting in a 50.75 percent lot coverage by impermeable surfaces and a 40.41 percent building coverage rather than the 50.40 percent maximums respectively as required by Sections 118-122B and 118-1258 of the Skokie Village Code in a R2 single-family district. Okay? And you want me to start reading the petitioner's statement, or?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, all right.
Elaine, hold on one second.
We're getting nothing here.
Yours is working, though, right?
Test one.
I think, I think mine-
I got, I got it on.
Maybe it's because my voice carries so much. I think that has more to do with it, more than anything.
Testing one, two.
Hello, test one, two.
No, nothing.
I guess you can't hear me either, huh?
If I'm going, if I'm not getting anything.
No, nothing's on.
What is that?
No, but you turn, what do you-
Your power light is on.
My light is on.
Yeah, sir. That's on, we're recording.
We are recording?
Yeah, so that's on, but we're not getting audio.
Oh, okay. Well, if we're, if we're recording for the record, that should be totally adequate, I would think.
Put on if it's picking anything up.
How about turn it off?
It'll shut everything down.
I feel like, I feel like a TV station. We're experiencing technical difficulties, please stand by.
I don't know what to tell you.
Well, we'll just have to talk loud. That's all.
Well, assuming there's even a microphone.
We'll scream.
Camera.
No, nothing.
They're not even gonna pick up any audio.
Well, that, well, Brian was saying that we're actually being recorded for the record, is that correct?
But there's no audio.
I don't think it's gonna pick up any audio.
To be able to have a sign language interpreter.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we actually had a sign language person, right, exactly.
Want to just have somebody record it with an iPhone?
I was about to just do that.
Oh, yeah?
You put her in the middle, it'll pick up most of it, just in case it isn't recording.
Okay.
Okay?
Brian?
I'll give it a minute.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's that?
That probably was turned off because of that.
So when you click it on, you turn the podium on?
What do you want me to do?
When you turn it on, you just click the podium on?
At least I know we're in good hands, we have a, we have one of the main people from our Apple Store up at Old Orchard, so.
Very nice.
Yeah. That's a good thing, unfortunately, they're not Apple products that are, you know.
That's not a good thing.
Oh, this?
No, I don't know what's that.
This?
I don't think we've ever-
Try to throw it, ready? That does seem like a volume. No, no, test this one. On floor mic, on podium, whoops, on podium mic. I got a feeling that antiquated equipment-
I love computers, yuck.
We need like a bag of phone in there, just.
That should be coming back.
Yeah, I think this might be some antiquated piece of equipment.
Ryan?
Yes, ma'am.
If you can't get it to-
Test one, two.
And then comes up here and talks.
Well, to get video, it's, it's one of his, there's one going there, there's one for the room and one at him.
Okay.
I'll let him know tomorrow morning. It's, we are, I, this is on, we're recording, it's videotaped on.
Okay.
Okay, it says the projectors are on. Projectors on.
Should we, like you say, you got an iPhone here, should we have another one up by the podium?
Yeah, I think when it's recording, it shows fluctuations when it'll have input.
Okay.
I wonder if we could look at it, you can try talking, we see if it moves.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, see if it's actually picking anything up.
Yeah, it's picking anything up.
Okay. Test, test, one, two, three, you seeing anything?
We're at the ends of that door.
Pardon me?
We're not there yet.
Oh, okay.
I thought it shows like a, like-
Hmm.
See on the break, see if it's, try talking.
Okay. One, two, three, test.
Yes.
All right, so it is recording. Elaine, Elaine, try talking into your microphone.
All right, can you hear me?
They're, they're looking to see if they're, if they're actually getting something on the recorder in the back.
Well.
I think that just might be like a vestige of the old system or something.
It worked last time.
Yeah, really?
Yeah.
All the switches up and, yeah, knobs up.
Well, at least that's, I got that back working.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Test one, two.
No, it's not working.
Yeah, not tell us.
Well, it, if it's, if it's taking in the audio and not putting it out here, then it's the amplification system down there.
What's up?
If it's, if it's recording the audio through here, then it's the amplifier to out here that's not working.
Yeah, that's what we think, because when you talk, it definitely is moving.
Did, did you get anything when Elaine was talking? So.
Elaine, try talking.
Try talking to your microphone. Try talking, now, can you hear me?
They're, they're, they want to see if what you're saying is being recorded in the back.
Is it being recorded? One, two, three, four, testing?
It appears that we're actually getting the audio recorded for the record, which is good. It's just that we don't have any, you know, amplification for the room in here, so, so that's-
We'll talk loud.
Are you capable of doing it, Elaine?
Huh?
That's a good start, okay. They're, they're checking to see if they can, if they can fix it from back there. If, if not, we'll get things rolling in a minute here. Sorry for the delay, so.
Yeah, your voice really amplifies.
Well.
It's deceiving.
Yeah, yeah. You know, maybe, maybe it happens to be the, the, what's the, the acoustic.
Should I test it now?
I might be like in the sweet acoustics pod.
Nothing?
You know?
No.
Still nothing.
It looks like it's recording, I want the iPhone containing recording.
Uh-huh, yeah, just in case, as a backup.
Take notes.
Sure. Take good notes.
Pretend it's like back in 1888.
1888, yeah. Let me get my quill pen with the brown ink, you know.
There's some candles out here.
Yeah, right, no kidding, yeah.
Okay, it's, the amplifier's broken for the speakers, we're recording.
Oh, we're not gonna get it fixed.
No.
Not, not tonight.
Okay, all right.
I'll let him know tomorrow morning.
Okay, very good. Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting now and Commissioner Jacobson, you were going, going ahead and reading the petitioner's statement.
All right, I was gonna read the petitioner's statement.
Yeah, please do.
Okay. One, there is a limitation on use of the property due to physical, topographical, and geologic features. The existing physical conditions associated with this property are limiting the ability of the owner to provide a basic garage to store their vehicles. Since the lot size is less than 4,700 square feet and the existing home already totals approximately 1,565 square feet towards the building area coverage, there is little opportunity for the owner to build a detached garage without exceeding the coverage requirements 40 percent. While the existing impermeable area will be reduced by approximately 300 square feet from where it exists currently, once the project is completed, it too will also exceed the permitted level 50 percent for the lot, for the lot. Based on the existing coverage condition associated with the lot, there is a limitation on what the owners can reasonably add to their property. Two, without a variance, there can be no reasonable use of the property. Single-family residential lots within the village are often associated with rear detached garages, either off the alley or accessed via a driveway. This is a typical layout for the village as it keeps as many vehicles off the residential street and allows the owner to keep their vehicles protected. As such, it has become an acceptable and reasonable use of residential property within the village. For this 37.50-foot-wide property, the construction of even a basic two-car garage, that is, a 20,000, 20.00-foot to 20.00-foot is not possible, so that the owner is proposing a 15-foot-wide, one-and-a-half-car structure to get at least one of his vehicles off the public street. Since the proposed garage will still exceed the building and impermeable area requirement, then a variation is required to locate this small garage, which is considered a reasonable use of the property. Three, the request is not based solely on economic reasons. The request is based on the owner's intent to get a vehicle off the public way and into covered storage. Their interest is not solely based on the potential economic return, but to improve the overall residential nature of their area by removing a vehicle from the street and helping to protect their vehicle from the elements. Four, the property owner did not create the necessity for the, for the variance. The necessity for the variance was created by the existing minimal lot size along with the size of the existing residence, which has created a situation where even a minimal garage requires zoning relief. Five, the request is the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. Instead of applying for a two-car garage, the owner have opted for a one-and-a-half-car structure so as to limit the extent of the requested, requested variations. In addition, the total impermeable area for the lot has been reduced by approximately 295 square feet by eliminating all the existing patio concrete in the rear yard. Six, the request will not be injurious to public health, safety, or welfare. Since a garage is a reasonable use for a residential lot in the village and this proposed will be, will see the structure located off the existing alley, alley, there will not be any detrimental impact to the public health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the village at large. In addition, since the impermeable area will be reduced with this application, the amount of runoff created by this lot will improve. Seven, the subject site possesses one or more unique characteristics generally not applicable to similarly situated properties. The property currently exhibits a large amount of impervious surface, which the new garage project seeks to reduce significantly by almost 300 square feet. While the size of the existing residence is what is really driving the necessity for the variation, the applicant realizes the need to limit the extent of the requested variation and so reducing the size of the proposed garage while eliminating a significant amount of impervious surface will assist in dealing with the existing limitations on this small lot.
Bravo, Elaine, good, good job.
Okay.
I think I'm done at that point.
Now, in the staff report, would you please read the Civil Engineering Division report and the Community Development Department report only?
The Civil Engine, Civil Engineering Division, the Civil Engineering Division typically recommends compliance with the impermeable surface regulations. Due to the proposed minor increase, Civil Engineering has no objections to the petitioner's request as long as downspouts and gutters are installed on the garage that discharge to a pop-up drain at least 10 feet away from the side lot lines. And then, Community Development Department, the Community Development Department has no objections to the petitioner's request to construct a 300-square-foot detached garage. The requested variations are both less than 1 percent over the allowed maximums. The proposed impermeable surfaces would actually decrease on site due to the removal of the patio in the rear yard. The pop-up drain or dry well as proposed by Civil Engineering will lessen the chance stormwater will run off to neighboring properties in our public alley.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, Elaine, I greatly appreciate that yeoman work on reading everything there, especially without amplification. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chair.
Yeah, could we have your name and spell it for the record?
My name is Andrew Venamore, V-E-N-A-M-O-R-E.
Okay.
My address is 602 Academy Drive, Northbrook, Illinois.
Okay, and if I may, because I haven't done so yet, I'd like to swear again. Do you affirm that the testimony you were about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge or belief?
I do.
All right, very good, thank you so much. And as the petitioner has stated in the packet here, you are representing the petitioners,
the Scallenders, tonight? Correct, I'm here on their behalf.
Okay, very good. All right, go ahead then, sir, and please tell us why we're here tonight.
Thank you, Chair, and again, thank you, Member Jacobson, for going through the project to this point. As was described, the project before you this evening is the development or the construction of a one-and-a-half-car garage in place of a substantial amount of concrete that's in the backyard. The survey that I'm showing at the moment just shows those existing conditions and shows where the concrete is located. Further, to verify that, from the survey, is a photo is taken by the homeowner indicating where in the backyard the garage is intended, intended to be located. The home at the moment, you can see from the area view on the bottom, is a split-level home. It's pretty reasonably vegetated at the back, but what really is sort of overwhelming back there is the amount of existing concrete that, that is intended to be removed by this project. So to step back, when the homeowners decided that they would like to locate their vehicles undercover and off the street, the approach was to locate a standard garage, a 20-by-20. As a result of that, the homeowner actually took it upon himself to start running some calculations just to see kind of where everything stood and realized that the 20-by-20 would push his both impervious surface and his building coverage over the permitted level by, you know, a reasonably substantial amount. So at that point, understanding that there was going to be issues with that size garage, they decided to reduce the size of the structure down from a standard two-car down to basically a one-and-a-half-car structure. The idea being to at least be able to get the vehicle in, on one side of the garage and then their two motorcycles directly opposite. They spent hours marking out in the backyard trying to figure out how to best make this work and, again, understanding that they didn't want to request more than what was absolutely necessary, they got the size of the garage down to that 15-foot width, that 15-foot dimension, that will allow the vehicle plus the two motorbikes and the ability to get both, you know, the vehicle, the car out separately and the motorbikes out separately. So a lot of consideration was given before we even got to this point, before we applied for a permit and the variation, on the understanding that we would be here before you and the idea was to limit the extent of those requests as much as possible. So the variation, as was identified, is for impervious surface release of less than 1 percent and maximum land coverage relief of also less than 1 percent. About 34 square feet of impervious surface relief and about 19 square feet for building I want to point out, as was already indicated, that, and you can see it, I'll jump from one survey to another, you can see the difference between what's going on in the rear yard currently and what is proposed. You'll notice if you look just specifically back there at the amount of existing impervious surface compared to what the current project's intent is, which is a five-foot apron, which is a required setback, the garage, and then an extension of the existing sidewalk from the back of the house to where the service door is going to be on the back of the garage. There is a, a pretty decent reduction in the amount of impervious surface. So even though we are requesting relief from an impervious standpoint, that relief requested is much smaller than what it will currently be today. In addition to that, as was mentioned through the engineering review, obviously, their requirement is for us to further store or ensure the storage of any of the runoff from the downspouts on the property, so that will even further reduce any runoff that, that's currently existing, based on the impervious surface that's there on the lot. So the hardship, I believe, or we believe, is tied essentially to the minimal size of the lot, which at 4,600 square feet is certainly, you know, much smaller than a standard R2 lot. In addition to which, the size of the existing home that was built, you know, when this lot was subdivided, some probably 40, 50 years ago, is also relatively large compared to the size of the lot. It's not a large home, but in comparison to what is there and the width of the lot at 37 and a half feet, it's a relatively large home. Both of those factors are really what's driving our requests for variation. And in the situation, as I've mentioned, where we, the homeowner squeezed and scrimped and got down to that 15-foot width, you know, we are left with very minimal requests, what, less than 1 percent each, as I've mentioned. And in our view, it's a relatively de minimis request based on, you know, what could have been done here at, you know, a standard 20-by-20 garage. So we hope the board feels the same way and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Well, before, before we go into-
Any questions being presented to you, I'd like to get Commissioner Jacobson's impressions on this case.
I went by the house and I, I saw the house, I went down Drake and I went down the alley and I saw that there are a number of garages, one-and-a-half-car garages. There were one or two one-car garages, but for the most part, they're all one-and-a-half car garages. I saw no reason not to allow this. I mean, it walked right in.
Okay, so it's, it's in character with the neighborhood?
It's in character, yeah.
Okay, great.
I have a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Gerson.
Brian, the house next door to it looks like it has a two-car garage and it looks like it's identical. I'm looking at the aerial. I'm looking at the, uh, aerial. Right there, yeah. Is that a two-car garage?
Uh, possibly, I didn't do research on the other properties, I drove by the site. I believe it's a smaller two-car garage that either attained a variation or could have been built prior to the impermeable surface regulations going in and was allowed to be rebuilt. It's a, it's, it's a, I believe it's a smaller two-car garage. When I drove by, I did not do the research to confirm the size, though.
It'll be a, if the lot widths are the same, which they, I believe they are at thirty-seven and a half feet, it's probably a twenty-foot wide by twenty-foot deep garage.
Yeah, that, it, it looks like the two houses are identical.
Correct.
And it looks like the lot sizes are identical. I just wondered if that was a two-car garage, too. Okay.
That's okay.
So I, I just want to.
Commissioner Perlin, yes.
Oh, thank you, thank you. The, um, Engineering Department had suggested a, a type of drainage, so would you be able to comment on that?
I believe the way that the Engineering Department made their comments is that it's a, a requirement. So, that will be done, uh, and accepted as part of that process.
Okay, yeah, just so you understand, we will, we will definitely make that point a condition upon approval.
Understood.
Okay, alright. Um, any other questions for the petitioner at all?
Yeah, just briefly with the engineering's comment, it was discussed, because of the, there's still an overage of the impermeable surfaces, so that's, and be, due to the s- smaller nature of the request, that's why there were two options. One being the dry well, and the other just being having a pop-up in the rear yard away from the neighbor's property, which is probably a little more feasible. But this, that'll still keep stormwater, eh, out of the alley, not going directly into it, and away from the neighbor's property.
I would put the pop-up.
Yeah, well, I'll tell, I'll tell you what, um, the way we would read it would be, um, gutters and downspouts must be installed on the garage and directed to a dry well or a pop-up drain in the rear yard at least ten feet from the side lot lines.
Agreed.
So then that way you have an either-or situation.
Right.
So, whatever, whatever is best for your, you know, petitioner and, uh.
How feasible each of them are.
Fiscally feasible it is, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So we'll do it that way.
Please.
That way you have the option.
If you don't mind, yeah, 'cause at this point, the, based on what the dimensions are there, they're probably relatively similar, but if we could keep that open until we actually get out there and figure that out, that'd be great.
We're flexible.
Thank you.
Alright. Um, anything else for the petitioner? If, if not, then the chair will entertain a motion.
Okay, I make a motion to grant the variation. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I propose the following findings of fact, and the granting of a variation to the petitioner is followed. That Wilson and Serena Skelinder are the owners of the lot described in case number two oh one nine dash eleven Z. The property located at eighty-six twenty-nine Drake Avenue, Skokie, Cook County, Illinois. That said lot is a plotted lot of record and is abutted by single-family dwelling, building sites, et cetera, on the north, or at the north south. That a determination is made that the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in that zoning district. Two, the plight of the owner was not created by the owner and is due to unique circumstances. Three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the ex- essential character of the, uh, locality. I therefore prepare, propose that a variance be granted to the petitioner's for giving failure to comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance of the Village of Skokie as amended as to impermeable surface and coverage of principal building to land. The petitioner, uh, be granted the variation to, let me, construct a one-and-a-half car garage. I, I lost my spot over there. Where am I? I, I lost my spot. One-and-a-half square foot, uh, detached garage resulting in a fifty point seventy-five percent lot coverage by impermeable surfaces and a forty point forty-one percent building coverage rather than the fifty percent and forty percent maximums respectively as required by sections one eighteen dash one twenty-two B and one eighteen dash one twenty-five eight of the Skokie Village Code in our, our two single-family district. That all other codes and ordinances of the Village of Skokie shall be fully and strictly complied with, and that gutters and downspouts must be installed on the garage and directed to a dry well or a pop-up drain in the rear yard at least ten feet from the side lot lines.
Okay. Yep, I think that works.
Let me just state for the record, in terms of a one-and-a-half car garage, we're gonna say it's three hundred square foot.
Okay, there you go. Alright, good. Alright, we're good. Okay, we have a, um, we have a, a motion to approve with conditions, um, the gutter and downspout, uh, and the dry well pop-up. Um, do I hear a second?
Stick with a second, Mr. Chairman.
Wow, all at one time, wow, that's great. Everybody's awake. We'll give it to, we'll give it to Commissioner Sullivan.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
At least I'm age.
Yeah, well, you know.
It works out.
Seniority has its benefits. Okay. Um, okay, that, uh, that being said, the chair will go ahead and call the roll. Uh, let's see, Commissioner Perlin?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Beverley?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Gerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Arden?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
And the chair will vote aye. Okay, so in the motion of twenty nineteen dash eleven Z, the motion to approve with conditions has been granted unanimously, congratulations.
Thank you.
Corporation counsel, what does petitioner need to know from here on out?
We'll prepare the covenant, running with the land, should be ready within two or three weeks, and when it is, we'll contact you for the property owner's signature.
Lovely.
Great.
Alright.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, much appreciated.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Venamore, good seeing you again. I know, I know I've seen you in the, these chamber here. Yeah, it's been a while, but good to see you again, and, uh, good luck with your, uh, project. Okay, you're very welcome. Well, that's one happy ending. I'm not sure about the second one, though.
They're not here.
They're not here. So, Corporation counsel, looks like we, even, even with the delay that we had for technical difficulties, our petitioners are not here for twenty nineteen dash ten Z.
You wanna call their name and see if they're here?
Yeah, right. Is anybody here for, for David Family Properties LLC on behalf of Encore Entertainments, or Encore Events LLC? Anybody here for thirty-four eleven through thirty-four nineteen dumpster street?
Well, give them a second answer.
Yeah.
Crickets.
Cricket, yeah. Nasco, you don't see anybody over your shoulder there?
No, it's okay.
Yeah, okay, alright.
They hiding under your bicycle, maybe? So they dismiss the case, then, or?
Uh, yeah, let's, well, let's, uh, let's go through the formality of asking Corporation counsel, so he can earn his paycheck for the evening.
Exactly, as they say, in Cook County Court, it is dismissed for want of prosecution.
Oh, okay. Now, is this, is this?
Without prejudice, but.
Oh, without prejudice, okay, so they.
Yeah.
So they can feel free to reopen the case, but they have to re, they have to reapply all over again from.
To reapply, I imagine, and to repay.
Yeah, from, as if starting from scratch.
Exactly.
Okay.
This one was a free.
David, you don't have to present the case. Okay, you're welcome. Um.
I'll let him present it anyway.
Okay, well, that's it, um.
No meetings in December.
No meetings in December, at all.
And the first Wednesday in January is January first, that meeting is canceled, so the next regularly scheduled meeting would be January fifteenth.
So we're not meeting for two more months?
Yeah, potentially.
Potentially?
If nobody applies, February.
Yeah. Oh, so it might be two and a half, three months. Ay, caramba, okay. Well, it looks like we had all of eleven cases this year. That's, that's not even one a month, oh, boy. Although, that being said, that means that petitioners prior to coming to us are working things out with staff. And, right, so that's, I guess that's a good thing for the petitioner and for everybody involved. Well, that being said, uh, everybody, uh, happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays, whatever you're celebrating. Happy New Year, since we have no cases in December.
Maybe we should just, is it possible just to come here?
Oh, and like, just kind of sit in the chairs and try and reacquaint ourselves, so we don't get stale, so to speak? Well, I don't know.
We can come and just shoot the breeze.
Yeah, we could just come and shoot the breeze, right, exactly, goodness gracious. Okay, uh, any, anybody else have anything else to say? No? Okay, well, that, that being said, this meeting of the Village of Skokie zoning board of appeals is adjourned, thank you very much.